You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the July second, twenty twenty four meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access Laporte County dot org. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July second Michigan City City Council meeting. If you would please, please silence all electrical devices. Stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda on the roll call, please.
Mr. Beatrice.
Present.
Mr. Culture.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Uh, Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee. Present. Ms. Moldenhauer.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Polinski.
Present.
Ms. Tillman.
Present.
Nine present zero assent.
Thank you. Everyone's had an opportunity to review the regular council meeting minutes of June eighteenth. Are there any corrections?
Motion to approve.
Say. Motion to approve. And second, uh, on the vote to approve, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? Minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees? Okay. The claims docket? Counselwoman Tracy Tillman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the Michigan City Finance Committee did not meet on today due to that there was one claim for approval. Michigan City Riverboat and Boyd Claims Docket for July second, twenty twenty four. Riverboat Fund number two, two, three, five, zero dollars. Riverboat E F T Fund number two, two, three, five, zero dollars. Boyd Development Fund number two, five, zero, four, thirty four hundred dollars. I'm sorry, thirty four thousand. Thank you. Thirty four thousand dollars, and that is for pyrotechnico fireworks. And that is gonna be for your Fourth of July experience on Thursday, so it's well worth that investment. Also, for the city of Michigan City, twenty twenty four Riverboat Fund Statement of Cash Position, fiscal year to date, seven thirty one, twenty twenty four. Unexpendable balance, eight million, four hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-two cents. Also, um, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, including the council and the rest of the finance committee. I had the opportunity to meet with, um, the Controller's Office this earlier this week to discuss, as you know, we are approaching the twenty twenty five budget for twenty twenty five, my apologies. And so the meetings will be held for the first reading is going to be scheduled for September sixteenth. Public hearing for the twenty twenty five budget hearing for the second reading will be held on October first. And the third reading of the final approval by council will be scheduled for October fifteenth. As before in the past prior years, um, all department heads will still be receiving a letter of request for your department's needs. And I know that you will all be meeting, you meet with the mayor on a monthly basis, but, um, you're gonna probably be meeting more frequently to have those conversations. So those letters will be going out to you probably mid, towards the end of July. And then I will also be sending out that will include the dates that we will actually have the budget hearings. That is all.
Done?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Counselwoman. Uh, the claims docket. Is there a motion to, uh, accept the claims docket?
Some.
Second. Uh, motion by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilman Nelson. Amanda, uh, on the vote, please.
Uh, Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatrice?
Aye.
Mr. Culture?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenhauer?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Or the Polinski?
Aye.
Nine in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, thank you. Reports from boards and commissions? Reports from boards and commissions? Counselwoman Mullenhour?
Um, just very briefly, this is from the Sustainability Commission. We had our first meeting, um, on June thirteenth with the Engineering Consultant Performance Services. This is related to the ninety-eight thousand dollar grant that the commission received from Indiana, um, Energy Development. And we met with the Engineering Consultant, Park and Rec Director, um, Shannon Eason, Zoo Director Jamie Huss, and City Planning Department Assistant Director Sylvia Collins Martin. We walked the grounds and we've refined ideas for the installation of solar array and/or panels in Washington Park Zoo and the park proper. So if anybody has any questions about that, I'd be happy to talk about that after our meeting.
Okay, thank you, Counselwoman. Any other reports from boards or, uh, commissions? I do have a, uh, a few items to talk about. And the first thing I'm gonna lay is on to the sanitary board. And, uh, talking to the council attorney and Terrell, I was talking to him this evening. Uh, and I, I want to explain to the council and this here is a learning moment for the new council members. And I think it was approximately a good year and a half ago, two years ago, where we were in, uh, parks with the city of Long Beach with installing a, uh, uh, sanitary sewer down, uh, Lake Shore Drive. And it didn't come to fruition because the city council voted it down. However, there was a, uh, half a million dollar engineering fee that's in the contract that the city of Long Beach is supposed to pay back to the city of Michigan City. And that's in litigation right now, but I will let our council attorney explain a little bit more into detail of where it's at in litigation. So we all know what's going on with this half a million dollars that the city of Long Beach owes us, Michigan City. Go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Council President. Uh, currently, as, uh, Council President stated, the case is in litigation. Uh, it is currently in the phase of litigation known as written discovery. Uh, written discoveries where both sides get an opportunity to send over interrogatories, requests for production, requests for admissions. Uh, as I was telling the Council President, this is the part of lawsuits that you never see on TV. Uh, it's the part where both sides kind of get all the information that they can from the other side, uh, to make their case. There has been a court order for mediation and the sanitary district will participate in court ordered mediation. And mediation is simply a, um, a scenario where both sides get together but separately and with an independent mediator who goes between the two sides discusses what their positions are, the legal strengths and weaknesses of their case and what they'd be willing to ultimately settle the case for. A lot of cases settle in mediation. If this case does not settle in mediation, then it will proceed through the rest of the case phase ultimately toward trial. And that's currently where the case is.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Uh, and, and my position, and I was at the sanitary board meeting last, uh, Wednesday and talked to Jill Harris, our, uh, council attorney. And I told him that in, in no way, shape or form am I ready to settle for anything less than a half a million dollars that the city of Michigan City is, uh, owed for this. Because it's not necessarily our money, it's the taxpayers' money, we're the ones that are paying into the, uh, sanitary district. So I think in fairness to the, uh, ratepayers and the citizens of Michigan City, we have to take a stand and demand that we get as much money as we can. Now, depending on what happens in the court and in mediation, I don't know what that's all could amount to, but hopefully we will get our half a million dollars back. Thank you, sir. Uh, and also I am the liaison to the LaPorte County Solid Waste District. And if you read the, uh, newspaper today, there was an article in there about the recycling area uh, that is down by the Central Services, uh, Department on Kentucky Street. And, uh, that used to be out by Cavelands, they moved that box from Cavelands over to, uh, Central Services. And it's, it's become necessarily a, uh, more of a dump site than anything right now. But it's getting cleaned up and it's getting better. And we met down there, I think it was last week, uh, Tuesday, redesigned, reconfigured how the boxes are, uh, being positioned. Because some of the boxes, you had like six going where they were visible, and then there were like four that were behind where people could just pull over to the left or to the right. And they couldn't, nobody could see what they were dumping off, okay? And then I know, you know, everybody says, well, let's just put cameras in and that's gonna take care of the whole situation. Well, that'll help, but it's not gonna cure everything. But anyway, so what they, what we've done is we've taken the boxes, put them in a straight line in the area where you could go to the right, that's off out of the view of the cameras or people from the street, that's gonna be gated. You won't even be able to get back in that area anymore. And also the city is installing new camera systems in there, clear, uh, cameras, more upgraded cameras in, in that area. And then the whole thing about this camera system is although you have a camera system, you still have someone also every day reviewing the tape to see, you know, if somebody's dumping in there. So that takes time, that takes money. And the bottom line is there have been some people that have been caught dumping there illegally dumping. I don't know the exact outcome of what, of what that was. But I do know, but from reading in the paper and our city ordinance that, you know, uh, you can get a ten thousand dollar fine. Okay, as well as a class A misdemeanor charge of criminal trespassing. And I guess that's punishable up to five thousand dollars and up to a year in, in the county jail. So if you wanna take the chance of dumping illegally and getting fined five thousand dollars or whatever it may be, you know, go ahead and do it, but I wouldn't take the chance, uh, to do it anymore. But anyway, we're trying, the bottom line is we're trying to have something nice for the community. We're trying to do something environmentally right for the community to be able to recycle these, uh, items. And we just wanted to look nice, presentable, and do what's right. So I just wanted to pass that on to the, uh, community and let them know what the LaPorte County Solid Waste District and the city of Michigan City, uh, is doing. And the mayor also sits on the, uh, LaPorte County, uh, Solid Waste District as long as myself, so we are involved with that. Okay, any other, uh, reports from boards or commissions? Having none, uh, Ms. Amanda, are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Yeah, yeah, I jumped ahead. All right, reports of special or select committees? None? Reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mayor.
Council President, Council Clerks, Deputy Attorney. Um, I have a lot of updates, so I'll start with garbage since you started there. Um, so you did see the, um, press release that went out. And, uh, we did issue a trespass warning and a citation for littering, so, um, with the cameras, as we move through this process, we're still working through that. Uh, but we do want people to know that we will cite them and we will trespass them um, if they do illegal dumping on any of our property. Um, we wanna make sure that people understand that, uh, it costs us in overtime, manpower. Um, and a lot of these folks aren't local either. Just know that we have haulers that come through and decide to, to dump because nobody's been monitoring it. Um, I try to drive through there, you know, once a day, every day now, because now we've been catching them. Uh, I was out of town and I got a call that they were, somebody was caught. So we've caught a couple of people, we made them go in the dumpster and get all their stuff out. Uh, we made them pick up everything that they put in and we made them leave and we gave them a ticket. So, um, it's gonna be important as we move forward, um, in, in trying to beautify the city that we let people know that we mean business about it. Um, you know, I have our, our folks here from Vector and from Refuge because I, I do wanna share a few things with the public, and I shared this, um, with Coffee with the Singers is that, um, I know we've had some questions about compost pickups. And, um, garbage comes before compost. And, um, as I've shared with you, we're going through a, um, uh, the transition, uh, with the Refuge Department, who's a part of the sanitary district. Uh, the Refuge Department historically, um, previous administration, um, had five drivers out of twenty people working, everybody else were loaders. How do you manage a schedule with five drivers? So we're working through that. At the last, uh, sanitary board, um, meeting, um, we asked for an increase in pay for the CDL drivers to, to try to lure more people into that position. We've hired some new drivers, but it, it requires training and time. Uh, and so I'm asking the public to be patient about the compost pickup because it's important that we pick up the garbage. Now, most cities have an ordinance on how much people can put out for compost. We're just open, hey, just put everything out and we'll come pick it up. And, um, this department has the most in workman's comp claims, the lifting, the pickup, lift up, squatting, all that. Uh, because we have not set standards for the public to know what they can or cannot put out. And that's, that's on us to educate the public. I think that's our responsibility to make sure we educate them. But I do wanna give you a couple of, of things because I know it was said that, you know, this is a part of your, you pay for this. Well, let me tell you how much it costs for refuse right now. So, and repair costs alone, just in trucks, uh, we spent a hundred forty-six thousand dollars so far this year. Okay? Um, landfill charges, last year for the total year for landfill charges, it was five hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we spent for landfill. This year through June second, we've spent three hundred thirty-two thousand dollars already in landfill costs. Because we're picking up everything, right? And people are complaining about pickups and we're not charging and we sometimes charge and we don't. That, that's the responsibility of the administration to fix that. And you will see legislation that comes before you that we're gonna ask for that, right? Um, we need revenue to cover the cost. That's just what it is. Um, one of the things that, um, you know, as I talk to my peer mayor is that it's not stealing ideas, it's just implementing them and enhancing them. So I will be implementing a Michigan City, uh, um, Clean Streets Task Force. Moving forward, I'll ask, um, certain members of the city council, uh, from the public and different departments to participate on that task force. Because I am, I'm over it. We need our streets to be clean, I need people to stop complaining about what they get or what they don't get. Um, our goal is to make sure everybody has a fair shake and, and making sure that their streets are clean. Um, so, um, I'll leave that at that. Uh, I got some other things. Um, uh, planning department, uh, we're finalizing our permitting and code enforcement software. Uh, I know we get several complaints about the planning department, that's why I'm, I wanna address this. Uh, so in twenty twenty-two, we're averaging about five hundred permits a year. Last year we're up over twenty-five hundred. And let me say this, everything is done on paper right now. And what that means for our, for the department, same people, uh, is that they go out in the field and they spend half their time doing paperwork only to turn around and give it to someone else to do a duplicate job to get it in another system. That's unacceptable. But I thank you all for approving the ARPA dollars to get this going. Um, so we're in the final stages of, um, we've identified the vendor. Um, our IT department is working through that process right now. Uh, we've had, uh, the different departments come in to evaluate it. And I think we have a, a good, um, solution, um, that will be happening. Just with the hailstorm, we've received seven hundred roofing permits. Seven hundred, okay? So as the public is complaining about who's not getting back to them, I do need them to understand, um, I'm looking at alternatives for outside help to bring in, but it costs money to do that um, for a short period of time. So, um, that's where we're at with planning. Finance, uh, as you all know, our audit is underway, um, budget starting. Thank you, Counselwoman, um, Tillman, uh, for, for talking about that. One of the things that, um, I'll be asking for a workshop on is we have, uh, received our fee analysis completion for that study. Uh, again, we had fees that hadn't been updated since the eighties, nineties, two thousands. Um, so that's a loss of revenue. Uh, and, um, we know that we need to get that done, so we'll be setting a workshop. Uh, I met with, uh, with Baker Tilly along with the Controller's Office and our attorney and planning department, and we've gone through, um, all of the fees. So we just wanna make sure that we get it in front of the council and have those discussions before we make any changes. Just going down my list, y'all. Uh, couple of grant updates. Um, one of the big grants that we applied for, we did not receive was the Raze Infrastructure Grant, uh, through the federal government. But the beauty of that is they do a full debrief with us in August to let us know what we can do better. Uh, so we'll be submitting that again for Michigan Boulevard in October. Um, but we were notified, it was competitive, I think Fort Wayne and Mitchell Walker and Indianapolis may have gotten it in the state of Indiana, but we, we did not receive it. Um, but I do have good news. We did receive, um, through the state of Indiana, the residential infrastructure, um, grant for four point six million dollars um, for the Lake Ave Relief Project that we submitted this year. Um, for the sanitary, uh, district, we know we have a, a issue with capacity of Lake Avenue that has been contentious with several, um, uh, homeowners and, and different, uh, uh, groups of folks that we didn't know when I, we, we were on the council when we dealt with Long Beach that it was never shared with us as a council that there was a capacity issue, um, for, uh, the north end. And, um, so we did submit the grant and we were one of thirteen in the state to get it. So we received, we're gonna receive four point six million dollars for that. Um, it was in the news, we received seventy-five thousand Comcast Digital Equity Grant. Those funds will be deposited soon. And that's for some free training for families, um, uh, in our community. And, uh, hopefully that will go along also. I did get, get news, kind of good news from our, our congressman. We did submit for the, uh, uh, that blighted building on the west side, uh, right there on the corner of Willard and I don't know what number, six and Willard. I submitted a grant to create a resource hub there, a resource center, and it made the bill, the budget bill. So we will find out if it gets passed. I think it's an election year, so we have a good chance of receiving it. So we will make that a vibrant space, um, right there. Um, as, um, some of you may know, uh, the park department also passed that we'll move the farmers markets to Pullman Field next year. So that's gonna be a great location for a lot of different things going on, um, on the west side where we have the food desert. So, um, exciting times for us in that. Uh, working with, uh, a community change grant with the NWACP Just Transition, the Hope Center. Um, and this is really about workforce development around renewable energy. Uh, that's a ten million plus dollar, um, grant, uh, that hopefully we get that submitted by August. I think our timeline is July something, but August. And, um, what else I have? Uh, website and branding development is underway. Uh, we started our meetings. Uh, our website has not been updated with boards and commissions. I have interns doing it now because it's, it's outdated, I know it is. Uh, but we're working on a new website. We'll be moving to michigancity.in.gov, um, when we make the transition. And, uh, so that's underway. And, uh, July eighteenth, market calendars. Uh, we'll be sending something out for a roundtable discussion on the opioid funds um, from, from five to seven. And we'll send it out to the Drug Free Partnership as well uh, and to the public, uh, to talk about those funds and, and how we can utilize those funds. And I know that's a lot, so I'll stop there to see if you have any questions because I still got a lot of stuff, but, um, I'll stop there.
Yeah, Councilman Cora?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for a very detailed update. Um, a couple of things I wanted to ask you, um, regarding this opioid funds. The Supreme Court recently, uh, nullified an agreement, uh, with the Sackler family for that. I was wondering, are we still going to get those funds or not? Maybe we need to.
We just received something else about additional funds, so I don't, I don't know. I, I haven't seen that. I know our money's in the bank, so.
Okay, alright.
I worry about the money we got in the bank that we can spend, maybe we won't get any more, but we got a half a million dollars to spend. So, um.
The second thing I wanted to mention was, um, uh, you mentioned a lot of grants that we received, uh, which is really gratifying to see because it takes a lot of effort to, uh, apply for these grants. So do you have somebody in-house who is, who, who is doing this and who has the capacity to do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Me? And, um, no. It's, well, it depends on the grant. So like for the Raze Grant, we used structure point. Okay. We, we use the people who are, who actually know how to get that money. It's not about, you know, people talk about hiring a grant writer. We, we probably need more of a grant administrator. Um, Sylvia Collins in the planning department, she's been phenomenal, she's been helping us through a lot of the federal grants. And, uh, you know, the, like the digital equity, I wrote that, I wrote the one for Congressman Marvan, I wrote the one, I mean, it's, it just depends on what it is. Um, and if I can't do it, I'll go find somebody to do it and we'll pay them if they get the grant. I mean, you know, that's how most grant writers operate, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments, questions for the mayor? Mayor, I just wanna say it's, uh, very gratifying to see, like you said during your campaign, that you were gonna go out and try to get all the federal and state funding that we could possibly get for the city of Michigan City, and it's coming true. And this is gonna do nothing but benefit the whole city and make the whole city look a whole lot better than what it is right now, so thank you for that.
I did forget one thing that I do need to share. Is it okay?
Yeah, you're the mayor.
Well, I do wanna say that, um, we finalized our numbers for, uh, the Mayor's Empowerment Fund. So we're granting a total of ninety-one thousand, three hundred dollars to twenty-seven different organizations that are receiving anywhere from a thousand to six thousand dollars from the Mayor's Charitable Gala. So, um, those checks have started going out, direct deposits this week. Um, again, thank you to Horizon Bank for being our, our, um, presenting sponsor. But ninety-one thousand, three hundred dollars in one year, I think is an awesome thing. And hopefully we'll do it again next year. No? Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, Mayor. Are there any other reports from city department heads?
Good evening, Council President, Council, Marty Corley, Chief Police, Michigan City Police Department. Here to give you my monthly stats from June, like I've told you all, I'll be here each and me at the first meeting. Um, so these are June stats, uh, they're coming down to you. For our department stats. For our department stats, total calls of service are three thousand six hundred and thirty-four, total reports taken, three hundred and twenty-four, total arrests, one hundred and fifty-eight, um, I'm sorry. Twenty of juveniles and one hundred and thirty-eight were adults. Total shots fired caused of forty-six, total firearms seized were fourteen, speeding tickets were one hundred and two, through recitations, ninety-nine were warnings. Uh, warrants, warrants issued were one hundred and thirty-five, fifty-three were served, eight were recalled. Also for block, we had seventeen case reports initiated through our, our block system. Two were referenced thefts, uh, two were referenced accidents, um, one was stolen vehicle, one was a driving offense, uh, four warrant arrests, one was a juvenile runaway. Um, two were raven notifications, which evidence was found, um, at those scenes. Um, attempted suicide was one, drug arrest, and two were for criminal mischief. Um, for our social worker, um, twenty, I mean thirty-nine total referrals, thirty-eight were, she had thirty-eight total contacts. Um, out of the referral source, uh, five of them were from reports, twenty-three were from Patrol Division, one was from Detective Division, one was from an outside agency, and nine were due to outreach. Um, referral type, three were referenced suicide or attempted suicide. Twenty-two were mental health, two were substance abuse or overdose, uh, two were wellness checks, two were juvenile issues or runaway, uh, two were homelessness or unstable housing, one was aging or elderly, and six were victims of crime. Um, and two were legal issues. Resources provided, two were recovery supports, two were, uh, community mental health, um, agencies. Um, five were emergency department or hospital. Five were shelters and six were other, include, um, working with the victim's advocate. Um, at the La Porte County, uh, Prosecutor's Office. Yep. Any question report? I just want to, uh, point out a couple of things, um, on the shots fired calls. The numbers may seem, again, like I told you last month, may seem high. Um, actually, after we did our six-month, um, analysis over our shots fired calls compared to last year's six months, we're down thirty percent shots fired calls, um, here. Um, also the forty-six are, out of that, those are calls that we are initiated. So before in the past, when shots fired calls came in, they came from the public. Um, majority of our shots fired calls have been initiated by us through Raven. A lot of that, again, that the, the, the system continues to tweak through the AI. Um, I can tell you this, um, fireworks and shots fires are begin, the, the system can differentiate between the two. But with the overload of fireworks we have right now, sometimes they do come out with shot fire call. So, um, that is an uptick with us getting those notifications due to the larger amount of, uh, fireworks, uh, that are going off now because of the, the rapidness and the continuous of them. So if it's just like a, a day where you get like a couple of fireworks going off here, they would differentiate. But with the amount of fireworks going off, at least in the last like five days, because we're right in that period where we can't start shooting them legally between certain points, we've had a abundance of, of fireworks going off and the system picks up on that, so. Any questions, Councilman? Also, I'm still working on your request to break it down by, um, by next meeting I will have you. No, I sent you that report, break it down by your, yep.
Okay, any questions, comments for the chief? Thank you, Chief Corley.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, Councilor. Barry Taylor, Fire Chief, Michigan City. Um, go ahead and give your call, uh, stats from the month of June. Uh, for the month of June, we had eleven, let me back up a second. I know it was, everything was sent to you, so unless you want me to break it down specifically, you do have that. So you can go and look and break the categories down yourself, ready on fires and so on and so forth. Um, so our calls were, uh, eleven fire, we had three hundred and twenty-two, uh, emergency, uh, medical calls, thirteen hazardous conditions with no fire. We had nine service calls, forty-seven good intent, seven false alarms, and four special incidents. On those special incidents, the way our system breaks it down, unless I read the report, I can't exactly tell you what those are. Uh, for a total four hundred and thirteen, which gives us a call, as of the end of June, a call volume was two thousand three hundred and seventy-eight incidents for the year to date, which is fifty-five over last year at the same time, or two percent. Um, and I know on what was sent out to you said we had five Narcan uses. Actually, that's zero. She just made a mistake, but, um, so there was zero Narcan used, um, contrary to what your report and mine says. Um, that's pretty much, well, let me back up a second again. I got something else I want to do, I was getting ahead of myself. Um, Chief Corley had, uh, we done a, kind of collaborated over the month of June. They done some classes with us, EMS. We held classes at their police station. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had our fire class. We had, uh, our Public Information Officer, Tia Free, did a, like a fire, uh, safety class. Uh, I know you were there.
Yep.
Mr. Podolski. And, uh, we had a pretty good turnout. I thought it was a good thing to do, as something we could probably, uh, continue to do. I liked it. Um, and keep up probably doing something like that with the public. Um, so thank you for everybody that did come out. Um, so if I could, I want to make a, a little bit of a recognition. I got a little bit of story, got a little incident that happened, I would like to make, uh, I'd like to recognize some people for something.
You have all the time you need, Chief.
Okay, thank you. Um, so in EMS with medical calls, there's this thing called a chain of survival. Those of you that have been through CPR, done a CPR class, anything like, it's called chain of survival. Um, there's four elements to that, and it would be early recognition of an emergency and then activation of the emergency system, such as calling nine-one-one. Uh, early CPR, and then you'd have rapid defibrillation, early defibrillation, and then advanced life support. And last Friday, this past Friday, June twenty-eighth, at the golf course, we had what was a perfect example of that. Everything lined up and, uh, I'd like to recognize the people that got that started. But before I call them up, I'm going to kind of tell this a little bit. Uh, there was individuals suffered cardiac issue on the golf course. Um, and what worked out for him was there were people immediately available. There are people right there that immediately started CPR, uh, and that would have been Chuck Kraus and Dan Pischker. They started CPR on this individual immediately. Uh, we had another individual named, uh, Craig Dwight. I spoke to him today, he couldn't make it, it was such short notice. Um, but he said it was fine to go ahead and speak, you know, for him. Um, so Craig Dwight went to the clubhouse to see if they had AED. While he was there retrieving the AED, he ran into, uh, a woman named Nancy, don't mess this up, Doughty. I spell it, it's another way that, you know. So Nancy Doughty, which happens to be, I believe, you're a retired ER nurse, ICU nurse. Uh, she lives in Holbert. She just happened to be here for the day, was going to enjoy a round of golf, but instead she helped save a life. Uh, so as they're working on Mr. Voss, um, I ended up arriving and, uh, they had already had a defibrillator hooked up to him. He had already been shocked once by the time I showed up. Um, the machine was then analyzing the patient, so I stayed back. The machine ended up shocking the patient again, at which point Mr. Kraus began CPR again. I then asked him to go ahead and step aside, let me go ahead and take over, because I know he had been probably doing it for a little bit and I wanted to go ahead and give him a break and also, uh, you know, start, start doing it myself, give him a break. And, and I could tell that he was, uh, emotionally invested in that, because he is apparently very good friends with the individual, which I understand a lot of people are. He's very well-known. Um, I then started CPR myself, which Nancy, uh, continued at his, at his head, giving breaths. Um, at which point EMS arrives. EMS, uh, that day consisted of Assistant Administrator Brian Beach, Captain Jennifer Seaby, and EMT Kayla Pienta. Um, at the time they arrived, I helped assist with the patient until we got him backboarded. They got him onto the cot, into the ambulance. And from what I understand, before they ever left the golf course, uh, the individual had a pulse back. And, uh, from what I understand now, he is, he's actually looking like he's going to make a full recovery. Uh, people have talked to him, texted him, um, sounds like he's doing, he's doing good circumstances and that's fantastic. And I wanted to commend these people for what they did. They, they seen something that needed to be done and they jumped into action. And, uh, with their quick action and, and selfless act, they gave a positive outcome to this family and, and this individual himself, and I'm, I'm quite certain that they're appreciative of that also. Um, so if I could get, if I could get Mr. Kraus, Mr. Pischker, and, and Nancy, I'm not going to mess that name. Let me get Nancy to come up, and, and EMS also, can I get Brian Beach to come up? Jennifer Seaby and, and Kayla as well. So we've, we've, uh, Deputy Chief, uh, Shannon Borders had made up a little, uh, thing for him, like a certificate. We signed it, we'd like to present that to him right now.
Thank you.
He said we got all the time we wanted, so.
Names are a bit.
Go over to the office. Whoever you want to.
It's your point, huh?
So, Nancy. Thank you, this is a lifesaving award.
Thank you.
Would like to present to you for your heroic actions.
Thank you.
And also a letter of commendation. Sorry, I don't have a minute off, so. I'll send you, we sent you, had a lot of a challenge coin for Michigan City.
Thank you. Wow, you guys beat the sauce.
Good trick. Lot of drama.
Don't you give everybody theirs and we turn them around?
Yeah, Mr. Kraus.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes, sir.
Oh, no, this is Dan. Thank you, go, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Deputy Chief, could you speak into the microphone? Yeah, we, everybody on TV can, uh, hear what you're saying.
Thank you, sir, for your work, I appreciate it. And you get a challenge coin.
Thank you, sir.
Sir? Lifesaving award. Thank you very much. Challenge coin. Got something to the mic. Assistant Administrator Brian Beach. Your lifesaving award. Challenge coin. Letter of commendation. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
First saving.
This is your lifesaving award.
Thank you. Challenge coin.
That's Kayla.
Pienta.
Pienta. Your lifesaving award. Challenge coin and letter of commendation. To the Fire Chief Barry Taylor for his quick heroic actions. Challenge coin, sir. Your letter of commendation.
Thank you, sir. So I, I did not put myself in for this, I, I know who did. He, he received a, uh, apparently received an email from someone, and I'm very appreciative of that, uh, that, that the individual recognized me and, and I, I've already thanked them and, uh, and they know I'm appreciative of that, so thank you, Nick.
Mr. President, I want to make a comment.
Again, you could say thank you a, a million times, it wouldn't be enough. Um, very much appreciative of that, uh, which then actually brings me to something. I got an email today and they're going to be launching a thing within the county. Um, I talked to Matt Decker, which runs, uh, the nine-one-one center. Uh, so what's going to happen, there's a thing and anybody can go, you can go on, uh, like Apple Store, whatever app store you have, whether you got Google, uh, Google Play or Apple. So there's going to be, uh, it's called Pulse Point, alright? And what, what that does is you can go on there and you can download the app and it's, what's going to happen is going to go live, I guess you could say, to the public on July eighteenth at nine AM. And it's going to be countywide. And what that does is if you sign up on the app, uh, I'm still getting a little bit of details on it, but if you sign up on the app, what that does is, uh, let's say somebody has a heart attack, like, like, you know, there's a perfect example, the golf course, an individual is having a, a sandwich in the clubhouse or something. What'll happen is if they, this person having the sandwich, if they signed up on Pulse Point, what'll happen is when the call goes into nine-one-one, alert will be sent out to everybody on this app within a quarter mile of this incident, and they'll know that somebody needs CPR. So if there's nobody else around, this guy can come, or a woman can come from the clubhouse and begin CPR until, till more care arrives, you know, more advanced care arrives. So it's really something to look at. Um, it's, so it's only going to be for the public. So if somebody's having a heart attack, like, down at the end of your block, it's not going to alert you, it's just for in the public. Um, so again, like I said, if your perfect example would be the golf course. If somebody's having a heart attack, some kind of an incident where they need CPR, you'll be notified if, if you have signed up on the app. And there'll be another part to the app, which I didn't really get into the discussion with, but you'll, uh, has to do with, uh, recognizing, finding AEDs, locating AEDs, and they'll be put in the app also, so you'll know if there's an AED nearby also. Alright? Um, so I think that's something, uh, to look into. Again, it'll, uh, it's going to go in effect on July eighteenth at nine AM and it'll be countywide. So any questions, concerns, compliments, complaints?
Uh, Dr. Cora, I know he had a
Yes, sir.
Comment.
You know, the comment I have is to survive, uh, out of hospital cardiac arrest is rare. I mean, it's not that common. And to survive, uh, with full functional recovery is even rare.
Right.
And really, I mean, all of you did a phenomenal job, uh, in accessing all the things that needed to be accessed and especially, uh, somebody like, uh, I, I know Mr. Craig Dwight from the bank and to have the presence of mind to go and grab the, um, the defibrillator and use it, and that was really a, a phenomenal thing to do. And, um, and the other thing I wanted to mention was, uh, I think through the Sheriff's Office, I think, uh, the defibrillators are there on all police vehicles now, I think across the county. So, uh, the, you know, there has been like a, uh, an event every summer, uh, run, uh, uh, that is organized by Sheriff's Office to get these defibrillators in every vehicle. So, um, I, I, I think it's such a positive thing to see in the community that across, uh, La Porte County and Michigan City, uh, such good, uh, you know, it, um, it is, uh, when I see somebody at the hospital who recovers from something like this, it, it is really, um, it's a miracle.
Yeah, it's a, it, it can't say enough, the, the, the early care. I, I believe that the four individuals that initially started working on, on Mr. Voss was, they're the true, the true heroes in this. Uh, if it hadn't been for them, I, I truly believe it would have been a definitely a, a different outcome. Um, and, and like I said, can't thank them enough, so, uh, anything else?
And thanks for bringing them all here and recognizing them.
That's, I, that's the least we could do. That was the first thing we talked about when we found out that, that, uh, the individual was making a good recovery and he, you know, yeah, we, we definitely wanted to recognize that, so.
Yeah, I, are you done, Chief?
I'm, I am, if you, if you got any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I just have, uh, two comments. And Mr. Voss, I saw Mr. Voss at ten o'clock Friday morning, him and I were talking. Him and I were talking and then, you know, I found out later, this happened at eleven o'clock, eleven fifteen, whatever the time was. Yeah, and, you know, I'm very close friends with them, which I am, you know, Mr. Kraus and Dan Pischker, went to school with these guys, you know, my whole life and known them for my whole life. But, uh, it, it's just, I just want to thank everybody for what you did and how, how everybody just got into action and they knew what to do. And it's not like they kind of walked away from it and says, hey, what are we going to do here? They got, they got right in there and, and saved this man's life. And, you know, I want to thank you for, for that from the bottom of my heart and as a, a human being and as a citizen of Michigan City. But also I want to thank you for bringing this old award up, you know, for showing these folks, uh, you know, something great that they did, you know, for recognizing them. I think that's, that speaks highly of you as a person, because I know you care. You want people to care about other people. And, uh, I just want to thank you for that. All the firemen and all the EMS people that showed up. Thank you very much. Appreciate everything that you guys did. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, Council.
Yes, sir. Okay, any other reports from officers or department heads? I believe not.
Uh, excuse, excuse me.
Are there any petitions before us this evening?
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Pardon? Yes, sir. I, I know the mayor mentioned, uh, talking about trash and she mentioned compost. I'm not sure what compost is relative to trash. But she said, you said that someone's here from refuse and for vector. Could they come out briefly? I had some people call from Fourth Ward last week. They had some questions and I didn't have the information to answer the question.
And I, I did talk to some people from your ward as well last week and, um, they, their compost wasn't picked up. And I know that, um, our superintendent Chris spoke to some of them as well. And as I'm going to tell the public, trash is first, compost is second. And I'll let him explain kind of what compost is.
Perfect.
And also, um, I'll have him kind of talk about, uh, what other communities do. Because right now, like I said, it's just a free-for-all. We pick up any and everything. And, uh, it's a stressor on, on our folks that are working, uh, because they're not putting out, we got pictures I'll send to you. They're not putting like one bag out. They'll put five bags out or a whole street full of stuff versus, and then everybody thinks it's free. That's why I wanted to give you all some numbers, because none of this is free.
Yeah, I know. And the people who called me, I went down their street after, uh, uh, the next day. And there, what they had set out had actually been picked up.
Yeah.
But I went to the end of the street and there were probably three or four other different houses there. And it wasn't trash. It, compost to me means like grass.
Right, clippings. It's grass clippings and all those different things.
These were like sofas and mattresses and
Oh, yeah.
Tables and chairs. And I, that kind of surprised me because I didn't expect that our guys were going to pick that up anyway.
Yeah, but we do.
But if we can get some clarification, because I know the public's, and maybe some of them are here.
Yeah.
It'd be good for them to hear, here's what we're doing, here's why we're doing it. And if you have this issue, this is the way it needs to be addressed.
And, and there's a couple of things, because some, something came up to the last council meeting, I think on special pickups. And there's nothing really, um, in there, but people are putting full homes and expect us to pick it up for free. And, um, and, and I think that's the education thing, because we are going to charge them. But we just need to make sure that we're even-handed and that we're consistent in how we do it. And right now it's all over the place, because we, Michigan City's been a free-for-all. They'll come get it. We'll empty out our house. No big deal. So, I'll let them explain.
Good evening, City Council. Um, so compost pickup, sir, is, as you said, is grass clippings. Um, the way that is done in other cities is it goes in thirty-two gallon cans and it shouldn't exceed a weight of fifty pounds. Um, we're not seeing that here in Michigan City, Indiana. And the problem is, is that it's become a strain on our department. So, we're supposed to be grass clippings, but there might be dirt, sawdust, you know, it can exceed the weight. And the guys have to physically handle it. So, if it sits out in the elements in the rain, it gets wet. If they put it in a compost bag and it's got dirt, they go to pick it up, the bag falls apart. So, uh, as the mayor says, we don't make compost a priority. We trying to get it. But what happens is if we run shorthanded or if a truck goes down, because we've been shorthanded now for a while. Um, if a truck goes down, now the garbage ha- uh, has to be doubled up with the compost. So, guys have to go get the, the garbage routes and then they'll have to go get the compost route as well. And, uh, it's illegal to dump at a landfill compost and garbage together. You know, we haven't really been dinging for it and we try not to where we can, because we can dump at Hitchcock. So, it, it puts a strain on our city services. So, where we at right now is we have a demand and we don't have the supply to really meet it. You know, so we're, we're doing what we can. When we can get everybody out, uh, all the equipment and manpower, we'll try to pick up compost. But we got times where it's just, we can't do it, because, you know, you get some guys called off and equipment break down, the trucks are down, so we don't have the number of trucks. You know, I already had guys working like ten hours last week. We're trying to really chip away on the garbage piles, because garbage to me is the mandatory. So, like with the couches and stuff like you were saying, um, you're seeing a lot of that around Michigan City. And a lot of these piles require for us to use, uh, a payloader and a dump truck to pick them up. And we just not staffed enough people to be able to do that. And that was the purpose of us doing spray cleanup. You know, with all due respect, April first, we did spray cleanup for six weeks. And for six weeks, we picked up every area that we serviced twice. And we told the people, put out your couches, uh, if you got to pick a fence, you tore it up, put it out, we pick it up. And that free, and what that does is we get help from other city departments, so we're able to do that. And then, once we're done with that, we have to convert over to compost. So, it makes it a little more difficult to get the piles. We try to address it as we can. We have a list, but we're getting a little more efficient with it. I have personally been involved in hiring and training drivers, so we're getting staffed. I think you'll see next week, we'll be able to start tackling it. You know, we're doing it on Kentone, but we need help as well, you know, from the public, from the council. We need some bumper guards in place to help put a control on it, like with the compost. It's, it's, it's like, you can pull up to a stop, there's fifteen cans, like somebody running a compost business. Or you got a bunch of bags, it could be fifteen, twenty bags out there. Those guys have to physically handle that stuff and put it in there. So, if you're getting garbage all day and then you're going to get compost, you know, uh, I know people say we getting done at twelve o'clock. We're not getting done at twelve o'clock. You guys putting in ten-hour days, just getting up the regular garbage. So, that's where, you know, unfortunately we had to make priority decisions. And that's where it comes down to, you know, we might have to leave compost sometimes. We don't like to. And when we get a chance, we'll try to double back. If the people can be patient, we'll try to get it the next week. And we try not to let it go two weeks in a row, but, you know, those are the challenges that we're faced with.
And holidays.
Yeah, and we got a holiday week, so we're, we're trying to double up on third, on, for Thursday's garbage on Friday and Friday garbage.
I thi- I think one problem that, uh, the people in Michigan City has is that in the pa- in past years, I don't, I don't think it was in the city code, but it was kind of an understanding that every family could call, get two, two things a year. You call, put something on for, in front of your house and someone will pick it up. And it could be almost anything.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the spray and cleanup serves the purpose of.
But that was not, I don't think that's in the city code. That was just something that people knew about. And I think they think they can still do that, put chairs.
And that's what they've done. They put chairs out. We put you on the list, we pick you up according to the list, and there hasn't been a charge. Now, the problem with that is that, that kind of started back in twenty sixteen. And there was no, nothing in place to say, there's a limit. So, people, even though you have spray cleanup, they just put out whatever. And then we go pick it up. And I used to try to warn them when I was a driver, like, if you continue to do this, they're going to continue to put out. And as you pick it up, they're going to put out more. So, in investigating into the matter at that time, we found there was addresses that put out five times a year. There's nothing that says there's only twice a year. You know, cities, other communities do that. Now, they, they'll say, they, they have a limit on how much you can put out. And then you want to let us know. That way you're on the list and we run down that list.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I agree with you a hundred percent. I think the problem was people expected that there was a precedent set when really there was no legal reason for that.
No.
And, and now they have to be reeducated that that's not okay to do. Now, you're going to have to call to have that, uh, picked up. And to me, when I went down the street with other people who talked to me, who called me, uh, uh, I haven't talked to them, but I thought what they should do, get together with the other three people in that neighborhood, put it all in one spot and share the pre- the pay of having to pay, get it picked up.
Well, let me, let me. We don't, we haven't been charging for weight or anything. And like I said, so we're probably going to be two hundred thousand dollars plus more in landfill charges this year alone. We're going to be coming back to you for money for recues. Um, because like I said, last year was five hundred and almost twelve hundred, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And just through June second, we're at three hundred thirty-two thousand dollars. Because we're trying to clean up the city. We, we're trying to do more, but we're not charging, you know, and people are upset. But again, two, uh, two hundred thousand dollars more we're going to spend this year, just in charges. And they're not separating garbage in some cases from the compost, you know, or the recycle. So, that's a whole nother burden.
I just think it's important that the, that the community knows what the rules are now, that they've changed. And that you can't expect that everything's going to be picked up the way it used to be.
Right.
And then I don't, then I don't think people will be putting stuff out.
We're going to do a man. We're going to re-educate, because we're going to make changes. We're going to make big changes and they're going to be good changes for the city as a whole.
Okay.
I do believe we're in the right direction, you know, but we just, we got to re-educate everybody. You know, especially when it comes to recycling. That's why you have the recycling bins out there. It lessens the garbage. And when you explain that to people, that'll help a lot.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question for you. It doesn't deal with refuse. It deals maybe with, you know, I, I see people putting shrubs out, you know, by the curb, limbs, you know, and you guys may have come through and gotten all the yard waste, you know, on a Wednesday. And then Thursday, Friday, people are throwing limbs out along the curb. What? I, I don't know. And, and then the street department will come by in a week or so and just pick all this stuff up? I mean, is that the proper way that we want that to go? I mean, is that supposed to be like a compost? They kind of pick up the?
Yeah, the brush goes.
Or is that supposed to be a call, a call-in instead of just, hey, throw it out by?
No, they could call it in.
Let it sit there.
They call it in the street department, which, depending on the, the amount of brush that they put out there, but usually the street department will go get it. Anything that they can put in the cans is usually what we pick up. Okay?
Yeah, because it kind of irks me, you know, you come through, you get the neighborhood all cleaned up. And then here's some residents po- throwing logs out there and big limbs, and then they sit and for two, three weeks.
Right.
Till the street department can come through again.
And that's the thing, nobody knows. They, no one knows what's the proper way of doing it. And that's what makes the city unsightly. And that's what we want to address.
All right, and then, and then one comment that, that I want to make. And the mayor knows this, because when we were, uh, last year, late fall, early fall, we were looking at all, we were looking at this already. We were having, uh, meetings, okay, workshops, and trying to put an ordinance together. And we were working with the sanitary district. They were supposed to be bringing us information, which we never got. Okay, how much things cost, this and that. And that, all that work is kind of sitting on a shelf now, waiting to come off of that shelf to develop this new program on how things are going to be administered. And I know that in the city of South Bend, that they've been doing this for years. That if you call for a pickup, a special pickup to get a couch, chairs, you know, whatever you got, that you're going to pay. You don't get a free, maybe spring cleanup, you get a free pickup, all right? But other than that, you're going to pay twenty-five dollars to get rid of that couch. Or you're going to pay twenty-five dollars to get rid of whatever you want to throw out there. And that's just the way we have to do business. Can't do it for free forever, or even now. I have no problem. If I want to throw a couch out, I don't expect the city to send a payloader, a dump truck, two people and diesel and all this other stuff, and a wear and tear on a vehicle to get rid of my couch for free. So.
Right.
Anyway, I'm sure that that's coming down the line.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're going to have workshops and get this all strangled out.
And I think that'll be key, having the workshops and including, uh, uh, as we start developing something, we can include the public. And then we start, once we figure it out, we send out mailers and let people know.
Yeah, I know we have notes and everything left from that meeting. Somebody's got them, so.
The fee analysis.
Pardon?
Right. Just the fee analysis, you know, just figuring out the price of what to charge.
Okay.
We know what tonnage is, so.
You got a comment? Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Yes. Yeah, I just want to put this into context. Um, back in twenty nineteen, when the Sustainability Commission did our greenhouse gas emissions, um, assessment, um, our city came up extremely high for the amount of tonnage it was sending to the landfill. And the intern actually thought there was a mistake, because it was so extremely high for a city of our size. He went back and re-examined it. And there was a little bit of a tweak he was able to make to it, but we're sending way too much garbage, um, to the landfill. And what that means really is we're not recycling the way we should be as a community. So, I think that's another educational component to it. And, um, I know our Sustainability Commission is committed to, um, doing what we can do as far as getting the message out and encouraging people to do more recycling. And I'm so glad that our president and our mayor both serve on the, um, South, La Porte County Solid Waste District, because that's totally their mission, is to recycle as much as possible.
Right, and the fact that we are addressing recycling means that we are right there in the curve of making a difference. So, you know, we're, we might need to emphasize more on recycling, but we have the components there to make that more of an emphasis. And like you said, it takes off less off the garbage. Another problem that you have is because of the tonnage being so high, is that you have landlords who have property here who bring stuff from out of town, because they know we not charging. And so, that's one of the things you had. Uh, people remodeling houses because bad tenants would leave the house, get evicted, tear the house up. And then they just gut it out, remodeled it, and they know that we're not charging, so they just put it out there rather than get a dumpster.
Yeah. Councilman Dabney?
And, uh, Mr. Carter, you just set that up on the tee for me. Because I've always said, I wish we could charge more than it, you know, it costs to get a dumpster.
Exactly.
I am just sick and tired of sending these piles. Somebody's emptied their whole house out. And, um, you know, we're, we're getting more and more renters and, and more and more landlords, like you said, that are, are dumping these houses out all over the place. I see them in Eastport everywhere, and then I see them basically all over the city. So, at some point, I hope that we can start to charge these people more than the cost to get a dumpster.
Exactly. I agree with you. That's the problem.
They're, they're killing us.
Right, if it only costs a few hundred dollars for us to haul it away, uh,
That's just the cost of doing business.
Right, and we have to treat it like a business.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Mr. Kelly?
Rick Kelly, Director, Director Control, Michigan City. Um, as some of you probably know, from the newspaper today, we talked about, I called it a war on trash and illegal dumping. Uh, for example, behind central services and, Mr. President, you've been there. Uh, we hauled away like twenty-one tons. We're talking about taking things to the landfill. Twenty-one tons of household garbage last week. And our recycle bins are clearly marked stating what and what cannot be put in the bins. Uh, there's been some citations. Madam Mayor, uh, is totally aware of that. And we're talking about cost savings. Well, twenty-one tons, me and Mr. Smith, uh, the Director for the Vector Control Department, we've spent, uh, last month approximately combined, and I say combined, not in one day, eight hours of cleaning up debris, uh, diesel fuel, heavy equipment, manpower. This is costing the city and like was stated today, it kind of took away from our resources, because we're trying to make the patriotic parade. We're trying to make our city look good. And I've said, and I'll say it redundantly, a clean city is an inviting city. a clean city is an inviting city. And my charge per Madam Mayor was clean this city up. And this administration, I think, is totally, totally for cleaning Michigan City up. We want businesses to come here. We want it to be an inviting city. And I take my charge seriously. And I just plead to the citizenry and to the less safe branch, whatever we need to do to make things work better in our community, because we have a nice city. But I don't wanna see trash. And I don't wanna take away the resources that the vector department has to donate it to something that we really don't need to donate it to. We're going down Frampton Street, Washington Street, Wall Bass Street, all of these thoroughfares, Michigan Boulevard. Try to keep it clean. But I can ill afford to be diverted to these type of, this type of behavior. So we're really, really serious about, uh, these violations. Because twenty-one tons of trash, household, that we had to take. People have come and they've dumped their garbage into the recycle bins where it clearly states plastics, cardboard. It's behavior that can't be tolerated, and it's costing us, the citizenry of Michigan City. So I, you know, we're, we're trying to get, and me and Mr. Carter, we work in tandem, you know, I'm driving through the alleys and we're on the phone all the time, hey, Brett this, hey, Chris this, you know, so we're working our hardest, you know, to, to clean the city up. So for those who are watching that are maybe dumping, don't do it. We got cameras up now. There's gonna be some, some prosecutions. You know, so is there any questions from you guys?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. You're doing a great job. Thanks it up. Keep it up. Same thing to you, Chris. Good job. All right, uh, Amanda, are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Communications?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on June twenty-fourth from Indiana Department of Environmental Management regarding deer crap recycling and disposable facilities. Um, correspondence slash invoice was received in the clerk's office on June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four from E S G Energy Systems Group regarding the Michigan City Measurement and Verification Services, invoice the fourth year.
Thank you. Are there any reli- uh, resolutions before us this evening?
There are no resolutions.
And ordinances this evening. Our first ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance-
Amanda?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending the third sentence of section fifty-four dash one fifty-two A of the Michigan City Municipal Code, commonly referred to, an application for employment with the Michigan City Fire Department, introduced by Ms. Lee.
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to have this on third reading tonight also.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Support.
There's a motion and a second by Councilman Dabney on the, uh, to have third reading this evening. Amanda, on the vote, please.
Mr. Beatry?
Hi.
Mr. Coulter?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Dr. Cora?
Hi.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Preszwalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so we're still on second reading, and does the author have anything that she would like to, uh, add at this time?
Yeah, so this is an ordinance, it's just changing a small part of the fire ordinance. Um, the original ordinance says that they will, um, post applications and post, um, hirings in the newspaper, but this is updating that to include social media, to include the city's website, so being more inclusive of where they can get their applicants from.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Is there anyone from the public that was to speak on this?
Yeah, Tommy Flavik, thirteen, uh, sixteen Ohio Street, some of who did read the fire merit ordinance. Now, our Fire Merit Commission Attorney, Corey Schaffrashol, the, most of this fire merit ordinance was established back in nineteen eighty-two. Now, that goes back to the Cliff Arnold administration. And what this is basically under fifty-four, uh, dash one fifty-two, it states, the announcement of recruitment is published in the daily ci- city newspaper for at least seven consecutive days. Well, I think we all know, we don't have a daily city newspaper anymore, so this is definitely language that needs to be cleared up. There, there's a lot of little language ordinance and disorderance to be cleaned up, and this is just one of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Anyone else from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Having none, uh, let's have, in, is there any other comments from the council? Having none, uh, this ordinance, uh, for third reading, Amanda, by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending the third sentence of section fifty-four dash one fifty-two A of the Michigan City Municipal Code, commonly referred to, an application for employment with the Michigan City Fire Department, and this is introduced by Ms. Lee.
And does the author have anything she'd like to add at this time? Okay, anyone from the public? Anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Public, uh, hearing is closed. Any council comments?
Most approve, second.
Okay, it was a motion by Councilman Nelson and seconded by Councilman Cora. Amanda, on the vote?
Mr. Coulter?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Dr. Cora?
Hi.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Hi.
Mr. Preszwalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
All right, thank you very much. Our next ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating section two dash four one nine and chapter two of the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish a restrictive non-reverting fund for fines collected for violations involving city trees. This is introduced by Mr. Preszwalinski, Mr. Coulter, Ms. Mullenhour, Ms. Lee, and Dr. Cora.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to move to have this on third reading tonight.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilman Coulter-
Support.
To have third reading this evening and seconded by Councilman Dabney. Amanda, on the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Dr. Cora?
Hi.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Hi.
Mr. Preszwalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, then we have the forester here with us this evening to discuss this ordinance and what it's gonna do for his department.
Yes, thank you, Mike Wolf, City Forester. Um, yeah, I'd like to give you guys a little background on this ordinance. It's really here to, uh, fulfill a gap in our city's, uh, forestry program, our urban forestry program. And, uh, what I'd like to use the money for is to rebuild the, uh, city canopy, our city's tree canopy, uh, and to replace the trees that are illegally removed by companies or individuals, um, without impacting our without that money coming directly out of our budget. Uh, also, this money will be used to seed money for future grants where we are trying to do matching funds. And, uh, the overall hope of this is to benefit the city overall by, uh, increasing the benefit to the community and to tourism for our city. So, but yeah, that's the extent of what I would like to give you at the moment.
Okay, are there any questions of the, uh, city forester? Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, any comments from the authors on this? None? Okay, anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance?
Hello, Scott Mellon, two hundred Kenwood Place. Um, I'm just curious, uh, wh- what city trees? What are we expecting to collect from this? What, what people, we don't have any ordinance against trees in this town that I'm familiar with on personal property. So this be damage to city trees and the, and the, and the just, have we had any fines in the last year? How much money are we expecting to raise? I, I'd be curious as to the effectiveness of it. The goal is, is enviable, and I support it. But what have we cited anybody? Has anybody been fined in the last year or two for damaging city trees?
Yeah, Mr. Wolf, go ahead and you can answer those questions.
Thank you.
What's that? To answer that question, in the past years, you have not had much money coming in from that. Um, but this is more than just city trees, this affects private property also. The, um, this covers uh, everything from private trees that are removed. Uh, the city has the, an ordinance that if you're going to do tree removal within the city, you have to be registered, uh, with the city. Um, and part of this, and I'm gonna take blame for some of your headache that I've given you guys, and specifically Brett and Sean from the street department. Uh, if I find somebody who's illegally cutting trees, what we found is what they'll do is they'll illegally cut the trees and then dump them over into the alley and have the city come by and clean up the mess. Um, it adds to your headache, but I call this, when we come across these, I call the city and say, hey, if you get a call to pick up trees in the alley behind one oh two Smith Street, don't pick it up. Um, and I, I work to get the culprit to come back and clean up their own mess. And so the city doesn't get that cost. But I also charge them, uh, the, the fee, the current, uh, code allows me to charge an individual twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, and that's actually, it could be per day, the way it's written, but the initial fee is twenty-five hundred dollars for, uh, not being, not working as your registered, uh, trimmer. Also, part of our process is when we have work that's done by people, I go out and inspect the work to make sure it's done correctly and/or, um, everything's done, especially if we send somebody out to do the work. That way, we don't get stuck later with coming back and the city has to pay the bill. Well, they, they took out my tree and left the stump. I want you now to remove the stump. Or clean up the mess they left, or fill the hole they didn't fill. So that's, that's the benefit of this. Um, I was out today, uh, we get tips now from individuals saying, hey, somebody's working on a tree over here behind this house, or left this mess. I go investigate that, find out who the contractor was, if they were a legitimate contractor, and then start tracing that down. Uh, today, I, for the first time, uh, the city is now getting, we're charging people. I actually have, uh, fines in excess of ten thousand dollars for today for companies who are illegally doing work, dumping the ma- the material, having the city clean it up. So that's, that's currently, we are charging it. So. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Uh, Councilwoman Tillman, that's a pleasure.
Um, indirectly in what you just stated, I know that, um, I received phone calls or I actually observed something of that nature that occurred, um, on a property close. And unfortunately, it was with NIPSCO. So why wouldn't they have cleaned it up? If they cut it down, why wouldn't they be responsible for cleaning that up?
I'm an ex-NIPSCO employee, uh, working in the tree. I was a forester for NIPSCO. I can let you know why they don't clean it up. Under certain circumstances, for instance, uh, in case of emergency, uh, power, tree falls down laying on the power line, NIPSCO is only required to deal with their problem of keeping the power on. They'll come out, they down the tree, get it off the power line, and they leave. That cleanup becomes the property of the owner of that property. Um, and we will often get a call later, um, but I'm fortunate that I have a very good relationship with NIPSCO. And so I can actually contact them at times and say, hey, can you send a crew back out and clean this up? I know it's not your responsibility, but it's, it's a pain in my neck, so would you deal with this?
And, and, and also, just for me, and, and my ward, or when I get complaints, I don't just send out or call, or send out emails. I'm gonna send you supporting documentation to support, which will help limit you coming to observe as well. Uh, but having you come out, that's great. But in this instance, so it's been almost going on three weeks now, and it's still there.
Was it storm related?
No, it was not. I actually went out and they didn't know who I was until I identified myself. Uh, because I asked if it was an emergency, what, did the wires catch on fire? What was it? And not only that, it was at ten thirty at night.
So anything tree related, send it to the forester, and I'll deal with it. I can get care of it.
Okay. And as we speak, it's still there.
Pardon?
As we speak, it's still there. You do have that address, don't you?
No.
Okay, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, make sure I get it. So, anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, uh, anyone else from the public who should speak on this ordinance on the second reading?
Yes, good evening, Sal Dunlap, seven twenty-nine East Michigan Boulevard. I just wanna say something about Mike. This is somebody who understands the appreciation of wood. We've had a few conversations about the science associated with wood. What it has done for us insofar as being shelter, food.
Yeah, Mr. Dunlap? If I may, if I may, okay. Uh, I appreciate what you're saying about Mr. Wolf, but it's not related to the ordinance?
It's in support of what he's requesting of you, to assure you that he's on the right track. You, you're putting your money in good hands.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, finish.
Bottom line is that he appreciates his position. You have a quality person in this position that goes beyond the practical, physical application of doing the job.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Anyone else from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Having none, Amanda? Councilwoman Tillman? Okay. All right, is, uh, any council comments on second reading? Having none, Amanda? Uh, read, uh, by title only, this ordinance on third reading?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, creating section two dash four one nine and chapter two of Michigan City Municipal Code to establish a restricted non-reverting fund for fines collected for violations involving city trees. This is introduced by Mr. Preszwalinski, Mr. Coulter, Ms. Mullenhour, Ms. Lee, and Dr. Cora.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Having none, anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Having none, any council comments? Is there a motion to approve? Who made the motion? Oh, did you trace it? Okay. Okay, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Tillman made a motion and seconded by who made this, the second. Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Nelson, thank you, sir. All right, uh, Amanda, on the vote?
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Preszwalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Amanda, and we are on new business? Any new business?
There is no new business.
Okay, and, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm gonna put this under, I guess this might be the right place to do it. Uh, under new business. And we had a woman uh, from the Eastport Association that was at our last council meeting. I think it was, her name was Kathy Parker. And she was talking about, uh, cars parking on sidewalks, cars parking in front yards and, and what have you. So what I'm, what I'm doing is I wanna assign this to the Health and Safety Committee of the city council, which consists of Dr. Cora as the chairman, uh, Councilwoman Lee and Councilwoman Molenhour. And to take a look at this issue and come back to the city council with recommendations of what we can do to uh alleviate this or reduce it in any way possible. Okay, and uh, also and Councilwoman Molenhour and I spoke about this, but with the, cause you're the liaison to the Sustainability Committee, you know, and we were talking about that biodiesel. Yeah, about, and then where this came from is I went to a sustainability meeting, the last meeting they had, and I was given a booklet about what's being done in the state of Indiana. So I started looking at this booklet. And I saw where in the city of Carmel, Indiana, uh, they were studying some type of alternative fuel for their equipment. And so I called the fleet manager in Carmel, Indiana, and he told me that they're no longer working with that program because it didn't pan out the way they thought it was. But what they've done is they're going to biodiesel and they're testing it in, I don't know, they got six or seven vehicles. And they're working with a company out of Hammond, Indiana that's supplying them the biodiesel. And he says that number one, it's, it's saving them money with their fuel costs and also it's cutting down on the uh emissions. So I, I talked to uh Darryl Garbatschek about it. And he thought it would be a good investigative tool to look at. So we both thought that maybe the Sustainability Committee could help investigate it. And cause Darryl's kinda bogged down with other things that he's doing right now. So I talked to the Councilwoman Molenhour and she said that she would give it to a couple of folks on her uh committee and see what they can come back with. Okay?
If I could add to that, um, President Perez Walensky, um, send me an email with the contacts that you've made already. And I'll put it on the next agenda for the Sustainability Commission.
Okay.
And we'll see which commissioner and possibly a student commissioner would be, this would be a great project for them. So, thank you. And thank you for following up on that. Greatly appreciated.
Oh, you're welcome. I, I figured if the city of Carmel, Indiana was invest, doing something that it would be worthwhile to look into, and that's why I did that. Okay, moving on. Any unfinished business?
There's no unfinished business.
Comments from the public?
Hi, Tommy Klavik, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. If you think I wanna talk about? No, first and foremost, I wanna wish Mayor Angie and uh Councilwoman Coulter, or Councilman Coulter and Councilwoman Lee and Councilwoman Molenhour and Councilman Nelson, our department heads like Mr. Wolf and Chief Marty Corley, when little Barrett was here, Brett Kelly and Chris Carr, Ms. Mary Ann Arcontroll. A happy six month anniversary of being in office. Uh, I think this next written half year is gonna be awesome. And I, I think I gotta give you an all A plus. You're really, really doing wonders for the city right now. Uh, I wanna, you know, our school board meeting was held uh, uh, last Tuesday. I wanna welcome, uh, actually welcome back Dr. Mohammed Mo Mura. He was a principal at Barker. He moved away overseas where he was living. He's back. He's now gonna be our citywide athletic director. My last, uh, Mr. Coach Larry Upshaw, uh, he's our new boys' basketball coach. As he came here from uh, he spent a couple of years at, uh, was it the Twenty First Century Charter School over in Gary for three years? He did lead him to back-to-back semi-states, I think in twenty-one, twenty-one and twenty-two. So Kobe can bring that success and finally bring that long way to like sectional and maybe, it may go on beyond in the stage. I wanna, uh, Mr. Rich Davis, he's our girls' basketball coach. You know, while they're probably in the next, uh, you know, they meet the last Tuesday every month, they're probably gonna announce our new superintendent. You know, Dr. Reese Walker, she's retiring the first of August. So, you know, I'll be moving on, you know. You know, make no mistake about it, these are very high-profile prominent positions within our city, in our community. You know, just, you know, just think of all the great names and all the prominent figures within the history of our city that have held these positions. I, uh, you wanna congratulate the Homer Bound, they did receive at least their full portion of the funding from the city that we gave a hundred thousand through the ARPA. The county council approved it there last meet a hundred thousand. They did? We did? Well, they, they, the county council gave them a hundred thousand. So it looks like they're on their, maybe they can apply for funding through the Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation. So, you know, whether you like it or not, I think it's probably gonna go through. Okay, uh, just think my three minutes are about up. I just have a happy and safe Fourth of July. Don't let nobody under eighteen light out fireworks. I'll be sitting between the, I'll be parking the North Lot. I like walking across and sitting between the DNR and the NIPSCO plant watching the fireworks. It's my favorite spot to watch them. This one, well, be going home and spending the night at my mother's side. I won't be keeping her private work fire. Her fire won't be keeping me awake all night. I wanna say thank you and good night.
Thank you, Tommy.
Good evening. Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. Uh, I've noticed around town a lot of our drains are plugged. And they have this truck that can suck all that out. You got weeds growing out of them, the trees growing out of them, and it just big, big puddles build up when it rains. And there's, there's numerous ones. I know, I tried to call the mayor's office, but she was out of town, so. Whoever is responsible for that needs to do something about it.
Well, I, I do have an answer, Ernie, cause I know you asked me that question before.
Yes.
And I spoke to Mr. Igalski at the sanitary district. And he said for anyone in the city that has or, or has plugged up sewer drains, storm sewer drains in their, in their neighborhood, to call his office and they will send a crew out to clean the uh storm sewers off.
I can drive around now and get lists and give it to him then, if that's what needs to be done.
Well, you know what, Ernie? It might be a good thing to do. Take it right to his office. Yeah?
That's what I can do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anybody else from the public wish to speak?
I might as well add with my couple of things. So, um, a couple of things coming up. We know we have Fourth of July, uh, fireworks. Tomorrow's the last day. Get your parking sticker.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you got to six o'clock tomorrow to get it. Otherwise it's gonna be forty dollars on Fourth of July. Um, we know people are gonna be out there early. Um, so, um, be safe for the Fourth of July as well. Um, but, um, on the sixth, at six PM, we're doing the ribbon cutting of the old bandstand, the renovation. So we would love for you all to come out. On Thursdays, we have our, um, our municipal band that has their concert every Thursday as well. Those are well attended. I know some of the council people have attended. Uh, as far as storm drains, sanitary district, yes, if you call um, or the engineer here, um, I sent him out on a couple of those as well and we'll go out and look at the storm sewers. Um, but again, um, no one to tap the battle. Let me say this to the public about the mayor's office too. I get calls for everything and I'm gonna direct it to the department head. I'm not gonna respond back to you in all cases. I have four hundred emails in my email right now of things like there's a tree that fell or, and if you go, if you wanna reach me, you need to copy kelly@emichigancity.com. Um, that's K E L L E Y at emichigancity.com. Um, I'm not gonna respond within two minutes for anyone. Um, and I, I think some people expect that. Um, we are busy, um, but the department heads do a great job. When I get the information to them, they respond and they handle it. I think they think we, uh, like, you know, send people out and like we're the control board for things like that. So if you don't hear back from me immediately, but somebody comes to fix it, that's because I gave it to someone to handle it. Um, so I appreciate your patience that I didn't respond and say, hey, they're gonna be out there tonight or tomorrow. Um, but yes, if you wanna reach me with the couple of hundred that I get a day, um, I appreciate if you copy Kelly. Um, voicemails falling, that ain't gonna get you to me either. Okay? Um, I'm out beating the ground, trying to go get money and trying to figure out how to, um, get through the budget for this year and for, and for next year. So, um, working hard to, to do that, but I need people to understand I'm not as easily accessible as I used to be. It's the nature of the job and I think people expect that. Now, if I run into you in the hallway, I stop and talk to everybody. So that's your best bet to hang around. Maybe you might catch me. Um, but again, please come out to our events. Um, our event planner, the parade was great. The kitty parade was great. They're doing a wonderful job. I appreciate all the employees and people that are volunteering their time to come out and help with those. Uh, so let's make this week a safe week and, um, support, uh, our EMS, police and fire um, this week is, as well, because we know we're gonna have a lot of people in town. So I appreciate all of you and, and your support for everything that we've been doing. So appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Sal Dunlap, seven twenty-nine East Michigan Boulevard. In nineteen ninety-seven or ninety-nine, I was favored with an article being written in the Chicago Sun-Times by Mary Mitchell. A young man here in Michigan City happened to read that article. She was writing about my activism in Chicago, cleaning up communities in a way, attacking the filth in a way that it hadn't really been addressed before. And it wasn't just the practical application of picking up trash and debris, but it was educating folk as to how detrimental leaving that garbage on the ground around you would be. When you said recycling, that's the key. And I think I've mentioned here before that Montgomery County, Maryland is one of the most successful locations in the country regarding their recycling program. Why? Because they aggressively push recycling in the schools. They educate the children. The children are the ones who go home and do the recycling. It's not the old folk. That young man who read that article about me back in ninety-seven was Brett Kelly. As it turns out, he's in a position to address some of the things that I was talking about in that article. This is not a joke with him. I shared with you that I provided him with what I call my Bible, and it's a collection of some serious things. Even a book called Dirt. Dirt. It goes back talking about dirt back into the seventeenth and sixteenth century. Why did France come up with all that perfume? Because they stank. Yeah, they didn't really bathe. They accepted fleas as being natural. And the more clothes you had, the more fleas you came in contact with. That's just how deep I'm into trying to do what I do. I mentioned Mike earlier. He gave me the permission to go and prune the trees on Seventh Street from Michigan Boulevard. I started on Seventh Street on the south side of the street because they were slapping people in the face, hitting cars, leaning all over. I'm gonna continue on over to the mall. We have some beautiful parkways there. To fully appreciate them, you have to cut those trees up. It further adds to the accent of what, where we're trying to go with this. And for, for where Mr. Kelly is trying to encourage us to clean up, we also have to be pushing recycling in a way that we haven't before. Our solid waste stream, I doubt, has got more than, less than rather fifty percent recyclables in them. And as you pointed out, if we remove the recyclables, that's gonna cut down on those tipping fees that we have to pay at the landfill.
Mr. Dunlap, if you could surprise, thank you.
Uh, the ma, the mayor mentioned a task force. I'm offering my spirit. If you're looking for a trainer in this area, you ain't gonna find nobody more qualified than me. I humbly but proudly say that. I don't tolerate garbage and trash and debris. And I appreciate anybody in this area of concern. All of us joining and doing this here synergistic approach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yep.
Hello, Scott Mallonter, Kenwood Place. Mr. Klavik, so my thunder, I was also gonna congratulate you on your six month anniversary. Um, I would also point out, just as a point, I don't know if it's good or bad. Nearly, virtually every vote that has taken place here has been unanimous. I don't know if that's good or bad, just a, just a data point there. Um, okay, I'm here to talk about the flock cameras. No, only kidding. No, I'm here to talk about money. I'm glad to hear about the budget that is coming up. I know that the mayor is vitally aware of uh, the finances of the city. Uh, kudos to her for all the grants she has gotten for the city. It's quite amazing. It's been millions of dollars. My understanding is the city has a structural deficit. We've been living on ARPA money the last couple of years, including this council spending millions of dollars of ARPA money that needs to be used. But we don't have that money next year, I don't think, or ongoing. Um, and we're all aware, we're gonna lose some of our top taxpayers in the next, by the end of the decade. I, I understand that the prison also pays property taxes, which kinda confuses me being a state property. You know, they don't?
No.
Yeah, I, I didn't think that made sense. But we're gonna lose NIPSCO and we all know that's gonna be a big hit to our finances. Um, so on that, I, I, again, I would implore this council to figure out how we're going to get in balance. One of my concerns is that we offer tax abatements to various entities, which I do support. I support supporting business. And we've offered, we've offered revolving loans in the past to various businesses. My only concern with this is the compliance. There are certain requirements for these tax abatements and revolving loans. Are the people who have received these loans following up with their duties or responsibilities to continue getting these abatements and loans? What kind of compliance do we have for these giveaways? I think that's something this council should look at is part of the budgetary thing. We've got to keep an eye on, on the money. Money's gonna be tight. Um, none of us are fans of garbage and waste, but I would point out our property taxes have risen over twenty percent in the last number of years. Not that we've raised our rate, it's just a fact of what's happened. And our property taxes do in fact pay for our sanitary services. Um, for years, we weren't citing people for waste. Uh, I guess we are now starting to cite people for piles. And to Mr. Beatry's concern about our, our expression that it's not in the ordinance that we have special pickups, it was actually listed on the sanitary website to call for special pickups. It was a service we offered. We're seeing dumping, I think, in part because we've canceled that without much education that I'm aware of. Well, there's a lot of confusion about it. Can we still call for our special pickups?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't think we could because on WFM, they're saying that that's no longer available. So most of it comes down to education, but it comes down to litter. And maybe we can get a community minute on WFM and WIMS to, you know, a city minute. It doesn't take long. Again, I'm over my time. Thank you very much for your accommodation tonight. Good job, everyone, and uh, let's keep the city moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Having none, comments from the council?
Can I speak on the abatement that he spoke of?
No.
Nope. Okay.
Any further council comments? I have a couple of comments. Number one is, uh, in reference to Scott's comment about the revolving loan committee. And I can tell you that I've been the liaison to the revolving loan committee and been on a revolving loan committee for, I don't know, six, seven years. And everybody is up to date with their payments. And there have been a number of companies that have already paid off loans that we've given them. So, yeah, that program is, uh, working. I just wish more companies would get involved with that co, with that, uh, uh, project. Uh, the other thing, and I took it upon myself as the council president that we've done it the last couple of years. We've sponsored a football dinner for the Michigan City Wolves. Before every game, on Thursday before the game, Before every game, on Thursday before the game, they feed the football team down at the squat post. And this year, uh, Jenny Heath, who helps out the Wolves football team, texting me, asks if we would do it. So I thought out of the kindness of our hearts that we would help out the football team. So it's a total of seven hundred and fifty dollars, and we'll be splitting that up. The game is against LaPorte, and it's in October, so we got lots of time, but I just wanted to uh let you know about that. And of course, we got uh, Fourth of July. Now, I'm gonna hold off on that. I want to thank all the department heads. And I'm not, I can't, I don't want to name out individual departments, but I'm all departments altogether. I think they've done a great job getting Michigan City in shape, cleaned up, whether it's the golf course, the north course, the beach. I was down there yesterday. I was on a north course Saturday golfing. On the south course today, golfing. And Franklin Street looks beautiful, Michigan Boulevard looks beautiful. And thank you to everybody, and I talked to a few department heads along the way. We've had discussions and everybody's did a great job, so thank you. And last but not least, Fourth of July, Thursday. Get your flag, fly it proudly, and let's all have a safe Fourth of July and come back and get back to work and get back to it on is it a two-day weekend? You guys got a four-day weekend or what do you got? No? Okay. I didn't know, I didn't know. Sometimes it's four days, sometimes it's three days. Anyway. I just know I didn't, I never had a lot of those holidays off where I worked at, so anyway. Okay, with that being, anybody else with a council of anything, Councilman Beatry?
Uh, in reference to tax abatement, we're gonna meet next, next month or next week uh, on the eleventh at six o'clock here at City Hall. Uh, it'll be posted in the news dispatch like all the other meetings. We have the CF ones from all the industries that have abatements, and there are three of us on the committee, Daisy and Joe and I, and we'll be meeting, and you're welcome to come as a member of the community. And we'll evaluate the CF ones to make sure that they're doing what they said they would do in response to the abatement. Two other quick things. Um, I read over the letter from Idam about the Deercroft Recycling Disposal Facility. They're swapping out some equipment, putting new equipment in that will increase um, emissions. So I don't know who has initial responsibility or primary responsibility over determining whether or not we have a hearing on that. But I think we should have a hearing on that if they're gonna increase emissions. I don't know how much emissions are coming out of that facility now, but if we're gonna increase them, somebody, I don't, I don't think we have primary responsibility over holding a hearing, but somebody does, and we should determine who that is. And lastly, the ESG Energy System Group. We met with them, Don, last year I think it was, the year before. And we had some concerns about how much we're paying for the information we're getting from them.
Yeah, and can I comment on that, Tim?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, because what, we got a report from them, and I think all the council members got a copy of it. I know I got a copy of it because I'm the liaison to the ESG uh, program. And we met, we met in the fall, okay? And we had Brad Derminick, the engineer, and I think Jewel Harris was there.
Goodbye, I was there.
And, and anyway, so we were gonna wait for, for the information to come in this spring, which it has. It came in last week. And then that's, now Tim Warner has to pick up the uh, the ball with that and examine that report, and we're gonna be, I'm waiting for Tim to get ahold of me when he has free time, when we can set up a meeting. We'll all get together. Yeah, and any council member, I'll send out the invite to any council member that wants to come and get more, you know, included in this ESG program and what's going on with it. And because it's been in existence for, uh, I don't know, six years, I think now. But anyway, uh, four years, okay, thanks, Gail. But anyway, uh, yeah, that's where we stand with that, Tim, so it it went from Brad Minnick, because you gotta have an engineer verify and figure all those numbers out. So it's gone to Tim Warner, and I'm waiting for him to get back with me when we can set up a date to meet.
Yeah, when we do meet, I think we ought to really take a close look at that, because that's a lot of money over an eighteen-year period. Right now, we're we're not required to pay each, every, every year. I think initially we had to pay three years as part of the agreement. On the fourth year, we had the option to not pay anymore for that information that they provide to us.
Right.
And all they're giving us every year is the same information we had the year before, basically. And I'm thinking we ought to re-think whether or not we want to continue to ask them to keep bringing that information.
Yeah, well, and then that's and that's something, and that's something that Tim has to take a look at the numbers.
Right.
And then we have to have Jewel involved with it to see if, you know, that's possible, if we're thinking about possibly getting out of a contract if we can or not.
Well, it looks like we are. We were able to do that in the the form they sent us. It says if you are unhappy with this or decide that you don't want to be a part of this anymore, this reporting, all you gotta do is not pay that year, and you won't get the report the next year.
Yeah, okay. All right, so that's where we stand with it. I'm waiting for Tim and uh, we'll get Jewel together and we'll have a meeting and go from there. All right, any other council comments? Having none, motion to adjourn? Council meeting is over. Thank you very much, everyone.